Good evening, City of Southfield. This is Lloyd Cruz, City Council President. This is a regular meeting for the City of Southfield September 14th, 2020 at 6:00 PM via WebEx. Councilwoman Clark, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Present.
Brightwell?
Here.
Hoskins?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Present.
Morris? Taylor?
Here.
Cruz?
Present.
Mr. President, you do have a call and we will excuse Council President Proctem this evening. We do have the mayor on the line, the city administrator, deputy city administrator, our director of fiscal services, city engineer, treasurer. We have a host of senior staff members on the call this evening.
Very good. Good evening to all of you all. We'll go on to the pledge of allegiance that will be given by Councilwoman Banks this evening.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you.
We have one presentation today, a special presentation given by our state representative, Ms. Kyra Harris Bolden. Bolden, are you on the line?
I am on the line. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, we hear you just fine.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for having me. Thank you to this honorable body. And thank you, Clerk Hawkins, for allowing me to address you tonight. I just wanted to give a quick update and I just wanted to let everyone on the call know that I am accessible if you have any additional questions, comments, or concerns. First, I just want to start off with my contact information. So if you have any questions about what I'm doing, please visit my website, which is housedems.com/bolden, B-O-L-D-E-N. My email address is kyra, K-Y-R-A, bolden, B-O-L-D-E-N, at house.mi.gov. That information is available on my website as well. And my telephone number to my office is (517) 373-1788. So I wanted to get that out ahead of time. First, I want to say my condolences to anyone that has lost a loved one due to COVID, anyone that has suffered from COVID. Being in the legislature has been a really interesting time, obviously during the global pandemic. Just kind of the nuts and bolts of what's been happening. We've had over 500 unemployment cases that have been reported to our office. But we are almost close out of them. We have about a hundred, a little over 100 left unsettled. And so for a while, obviously during the height of COVID, many were losing their jobs and contacted our office. So we are happy to report that the majority of claims have currently been resolved. If you have an unemployment claim, feel free to contact our office with the contact information that I provided to you just a second ago. One of the biggest things that we did was the Return to Learn Plan, which I commend Dr. Green on for her accessibility during that whole ordeal. I did end up voting no because there was one crucial part that was missing. And that was that COVID days, COVID-related absences were not excused absences. And I feel like for this community that was hit hard with COVID, that's going to be very important as our students return to the classroom. I have received word from our, my Republican colleagues that are in the majority that that will be addressed in our budget for schools. And so I'm happy to hear that that is going to be addressed. I got my second bill passed into law back in March. Obviously with COVID hitting, I haven't been able to give a really a good update. But we've got two criminal justice reform bills passed into law and hoping to help a lot of people through those measures. Those are kind of the highlights, I should say, of what has been happening in Lansing. Where myself and Senator Jeremy Moss are planning on starting up our coffee hours again jointly, virtually. I believe our first day will be October 12th. I invite you to sign up for both of our newsletters on our website. Again, my website is housedems.com/bolden. So you can be apprised of those coffee hour dates. And we can give you a more robust update about what's going on in Lansing. And Clerk Hawkins, that is all that I have. Again, thank you to this honorable body for letting me address you this evening.
Thank you, State Representative Bolden. We appreciate your accessibility and your constant visibility and accessibility in the community. So thanks for this presentation. If you could, if you have just a few more minutes, I'd like to at least go through the council and the mayor and see if there are any questions for you. And I'll start with Ms. Banks.
Yes.
Thank you for the update and the presentation, Representative Bolden. I think you're doing a great job. Keep up the great work.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Brightwell.
Thank you for that presentation, Representative Bolden. I definitely appreciate your visibility and accessibility in the community. Keep up the good work. Thank you. No additional questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Representative Bolden, for that presentation and all the work that you've been doing in our community. I know all the hard, hard work and the long hours you put in in the legislature. We are really appreciate everything you're doing here or doing there for us. We also appreciate everything you've been doing during this time, during this hard time with COVID, like getting PPE for our first responders. We really appreciate that here in Southfield. And we are very excited that you made it to your primary. And we're looking forward to, fingers crossed, making it to the general and continue serving our, our community here.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mandelbaum? Councilman Mandelbaum? All right. I'll go to Councilwoman. Oh, there you are, Mr. Mandelbaum. We'll put you on mute for a minute. Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes, hi. Hi, our state rep, Bolden. I'm so used to just saying, hi Kyra, so I'm being very respectful. I'm so proud of you. Thank you very much for your update tonight. I truly appreciate all that you do and all that you have done. The community thanks you. You're very accessible to all of us. Your visibility is great. And again, I just want to echo what some of the other council people have already said. Just continue to continue doing what you're doing. We appreciate all of the help that you gave with passing out PPE equipment and stuff at several different locations here in, at Southfield at one time. You also helped the Southfield Democratic Club, the church, our empowerment church who were there helping out. I just, you're just doing a wonderful and great job. And I really am so very proud of you. Thank you for everything that you do. And please continue. And if there's ever any time that you need something from me, don't hesitate to reach out. I'm there to support you as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. And we'll go back to Mr. Mandelbaum if he's ready.
Yeah, sorry, I was having trouble getting off of mute. But Representative Bolden, thank you very much for the update. It's nice. I always see you at all the events in the, in the community. And I do, I definitely appreciate your update. I have no questions for you, but I always know how to find you if I do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, did you have anything? Or anyone else on the line?
I hope you can hear me?
Yes.
All right. Representative Bolden, I just want to add to the, the accolades that we all think you're doing a great job. But I want to specifically highlight, my office has received many, many calls about unemployment, payments, checks, applications. So thank you for, I know you've been deluged with it. So thank you for that. And also, thank you for all of what you've done during, your office has done during the, our COVID crisis with our senior citizens. I know you've been doing welfare checks and checking on our older, more vulnerable residents. So that, that too is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Well, Representative Bolden, again, thank you for your time. I know you're busy. But thank you for carving out this time and reaching out to us to address the body today. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to this honorable body. I look forward to continuing to work with all of you.
All right. Thanks. Take care. Be safe. Okay, council, we don't have any appointments this evening. We do have four sets of meeting minutes to be approved. I'll entertain a motion on those.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the regular minutes of July 20th, the regular minutes of July 27th, the committee of the whole minutes of August 10th, and the regular minutes of August 17th.
Support?
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the regular meeting minutes of July 20th, the regular meeting minutes of July 27th, the committee of the whole meeting minutes of August 10th, and the regular meeting minutes of August 17th. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
All four sets of minutes have been approved.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving to consent agenda, we have a few agenda items that need to be approved. I believe we've heard, we've studied all of these in advance. So again, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. President, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A through J.
Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Taylor and supported by Mr. Mandelbaum that we approve consent agenda items A through J. Are there any questions or concerns before we take a vote? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris? I'm sorry, she's not here. Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Consent agenda items approved. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We have one public hearing for this evening as it relates to the CARES Act and amending the application. So we had to have a public hearing on this. Is Mr. Lampy going to lead this discussion or the administrator?
Mr. President, this is City Administrator Zorn. I believe Mr. Lampy is online with us. This evening, we're asking council to conduct a public hearing for the purposes, for the purpose of amending our 2019, 2020 Community Development Block Grant CARES activity. This is the money the City of Southfield received from the federal government for CARES-related activities. In particular, we're requesting that council reallocate $77,045, which we had originally intended to use for PPEs or personal protection equipment, and put that money into the public services. The public services monies are used to assist families with rent, utilities, food, very basic needs. The program, as we've developed, permits for income-eligible families up to 2,500. We have currently gone through 89,000, just under 89,000. The original amount allocated was 89,887 dollars. At the time we were developing this program, we weren't sure what we were going to have for personal protection equipment. That particular line funding has received funding from other state and federal programs. So tonight, we need to conduct a public hearing to amend our Community Development Block Grant plan. And upon the conclusion of the public hearing, we are recommending that council adopt the resolution attached in our write-up.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. This again is a public hearing for the amended application for the Community Development Block Grant for 2019, 2020. We may need to wait a few moments to see if, to give people an opportunity to log in or to call in. When you do call in, please give your name and address for the record.
Mr. President, I did unmute all of our attendees in this meeting. So they're, they can start if they wanted to participate in the public comment of the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, well, hearing none, I'll call the public hearing closed. I'll go to council for any other questions. Mr. Brightwell?
No questions.
Okay. Mr. Hoskins?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mandelbaum? Ms. Taylor?
No questions. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Banks?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Mandelbaum?
I just wanted to know because everyone's, right, but that's...
Okay. Seems like we're all set here. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll? Oh, matter of fact, I'm sorry. We need a motion for the resolution.
Mr. President?
Yep, Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 2019, 2020 CDBG CARES Act amended application.
Support?
All right. Been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we approve the resolution to amend the Community Development Block Grant CARES Act for 2019, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris? Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Okay, resolution adopted for the Community Development, Development Block Grant CARES Act, CDBGCV amended application for the public hearing.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. We have no site plans to review on this evening. So we'll go straight into communications.
Mr. President, I will unmute everyone to see if it's anyone here for communications. I am currently unmuting everyone as we speak and communications can be open.
Okay.
Mr. President, I do wait, I completed time. I'll re-mute everyone. But no one called in tonight for communications.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, council, I'll go to remarks from everyone. We'll start with Mr. Hoskins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I only, I don't have that much. I've just, again, continue to, if you haven't already, put in your application for an absentee ballot. Again, we are now seven weeks away from the election. And it's coming up on us fast. We want to make sure that everybody, everybody participates this year. Seems like it's said every year, but this is probably the most important election in our lifetime. And we want to make sure everyone's a part of it. Certainly reach out to our clerk's office and they'd be able to help you with getting a ballot, application ballot. Or you can always go to michigan.gov/vote and you'd be able to get information on how to get an absentee ballot from there. But beyond that, that is all I have.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mandelbaum?
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone to be vigilant as it relates to social distancing and mask wearing. There has been a slight uptick in our area with positive COVID-19 cases. So we'd like to, you know, just remind everyone to be cautious and try to stay safe and healthy. And the other thing I wanted to mention to all of the Jewish constituents in Southfield that this week is the Jewish New Year. So I want to wish everyone a Shana Tova, a happy and a healthy new year. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mandelbaum. Ms. Taylor?
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to send condolences to Fred Zorn for the loss and passing of his father. Terribly sorry to hear that. And again, I'd like to welcome Dawn back after the loss of her father. I got a chance to speak to her last Friday, so that was really good. I do want to remind everyone to dispose of their gloves and masks properly. We've had an uptick of trash. For some reason, people have been missing the garbage cans that we have out. We've seen more on the streets. So I'm just asking if everybody would be mindful and put all of their worn or used gloves and masks in the proper disposal containers. I just wanted to also ask everybody to stay safe and your social distance. And remember to count, do your 2020 census if you haven't done so already. And some of people are coming around knocking on doors now. They should have identification and they should identify themselves. You might even receive a call before they come. Some people have been calling. So just know that it's not too late to still answer those questions and be a part of the 2020 census. And like my colleagues have said, please remember to get your absentee ballot, application, and then get your ballot. So it's very important to vote this year. And that, that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Banks?
Thank you. I echo everything that my colleagues have said. But I personally, again, my condolences to Mr. Zorn and his family. May your dear father rest in peace. And then also to our Jewish friends and our Jewish community, may you have a happy, healthy, and sweet new year. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Brightwell?
Yes, I echo sentiments expressed for Mrs. Zorn and also Dawn King. And also, typically sometime when things come up, I will, I will make a call during the day to the, to the public department here. This is just a follow-up to, I think Larry, I think the Public Work presented this a couple of weeks ago with respect to the PPE clogging up our drainage system in our sewage system. And I think it caused a million four. And, and there was mentioned, I might have mentioned it a couple of times ago, there's a suit that is going on against the manufacturers of PPEs. Well, anyway, they indicated they are disposable. And I think Mr. Sarah brought it up that there was a suit. And I asked that perhaps we would have someone to track that, that suit to determine whether or not we as a community could get in on that class, if it is a class action against the manufacturer of the disposable wipes. So I would have called, made a phone call. But Mrs. Zorn, do you know whether or not, I think, I'm not sure we asked, I'm trying to find out what, what is being done to make sure we stay aware of the progress of this suit and whether or not we can get in on it because this is obviously costing us money. And I'm not sure we were going to put it, ask the legal department to track on it or have our outside consultants to track on it to make sure we stay aware of what's happening with the disposable wipes. That was a question.
Hi, this is Dawn, if I may, Council President.
Yes.
In regards to one of the lawsuits, I did look into, which is, I believe, Moncombe County. That lawsuit is addressed to the companies and asking them to change their title and their labeling. So I'll look into that further. But yes, what they're going after is that these companies need to change the labeling. So I'll follow with you, Councilman Brightwell, and see what other information I can get.
Okay. Is there, is there, is there indication that there will be some type of financial reimbursement for expenditures, expenses caused by the recent being non-disposable as advertised?
I am not sure without, I got to pull up the pleadings off the federal court system. But I'll, I'll get it for you tomorrow. I'll find out for sure.
Okay.
Definitely, it was more like if you would put that type of language on those packages and people would not misuse them as flushable.
Sure. Okay. Yes, ma'am. I appreciate it. Thank you. Take your time. Obviously, we got, we got a big plate, but this is something that I want to be aware of going down the pipe because it's possible for reimbursement to the city. Thank you, Ms. King.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brightwell. All right. And I pretty much echo everybody's sentiments on all their comments today, especially our condolences to our city attorney and city administrator. And, you know, we're, we're a part of a whole family here. So just know we're, we're here for you. We'll move on now to the mayor and his comments from Mayor Cyber.
Good evening once again. I want to follow up with a couple of things, council members. First of all, on COVID, it's very real. Since the pandemic started, since March, we've had 2,012 cases reported in the city of Southfield. And we've had sadly 245 deaths. We're not out of the woods. The numbers continue to climb. We've actually seen an increase of about 50 cases in the first two weeks of September in Southfield. So we all can't stress enough. in Southfield. So we all can't stress enough mask-wearing, social distancing, washing your hands. Moving on to the census, Southfield is at only at 70% response rate. We are out, as has been mentioned, the enumerators are out in the community. I've been in contact with a number of apartment complex owners and managers about allowing the enumerators into the buildings that have hallways and lobbies. We are, we have three events coming up. We've just added another. This Friday will be the Franklin Club Apartments on Franklin Road north of 11 Mile from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. This will include a Beans and Cornbread food truck. You don't have to be a resident of Franklin Club Apartments to go there and get registered. Enumerators will be there from the Census Bureau. Just today, we've added Sunday, the 20th, North Park Place Apartments on North Park Drive. And again, you do not have to be a resident of that apartment complex, but this census track also has low response rate. It'll be from 2:00 to 5:30 p.m. This is co-sponsored by the county, City of Southfield and Detroit, or rather, Urban Unity of Detroit. We're planning food, prizes, DJ at this event. It will, all of these events are outdoors with social distancing. And then on Saturday, the 26th, from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m., Beans and, outside Beans and Cornbread. We will be doing more signing up. Again, you can be a resident of any, any, any place in Southfield and attend these, these events to get signed up. It really only takes about four minutes. Last week at River Park Place, we signed up 50 people at our ice cream event. And finally, I want to mention a sort of save the date. As you know, judging ended on August 31st for the annual Southfield Photo Prize. And so we will be announcing the winners, doing an outdoor ceremony to save the date October 1st, 5:30 p.m. And it'll be in the Civic Center picnic shelter behind the ice arena. Notices will go out. We just set this date today. But again, that's the Southfield Photo Prize. And if you saw the entries, we've got some outstanding photographers in Southfield. And personally, I'm very anxious to see who the winners are going to be at the 20, amongst the 25 finalists. So thank you. That's my report for this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll go to Administrator Zorn. You have one item this evening.
Yes, sir, I do. And I apologize that this item came about last Thursday afternoon. And I'm requesting that council, council authorize the mayor and city clerk to accept a lump sum final payment of 850,000 in full and final resolution of claim 1904821. And that this payment is understood to be in addition to the prior payment of 3 million, subject to the review and approval by city attorney. Claim number 1904821 is the fire claim for the fire that occurred at Northland Mall in the lower level of the Macy's store on December 18, 2019. As indicated in my previous statement, the city has previously received $3 million from the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority. And the final part of this claim pertains to the J.C. Penney's store. The Macy's store in the mall, the 3 million was the maximum, maximum amount which the mall was insured for. The J.C. Penney's store was insured for 1.4 million, but the damage was not as extensive. The cleanup primarily smoke damage is estimated at the range of 850,000. So again, we're asking for authority for the mayor and city clerk to sign off on the final settlement, subject to the approval by the city attorney.
Okay. I don't see why we would have a problem with that, but council, are there any questions or comments for Fred before we take a vote? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell. I make a motion that we accept the resolution as presented by the city administrator on point number 1904821.
Support?
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we give the authority to the administrator, mayor and clerk to accept the claim for the former Northland Mall fire that took place on November 18, 2019. Are there any other questions or concerns before we take a vote? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Amanda Baum?
Yes.
Resolution adopted for claim number 1904821, former Northland Mall fire, December 18, 2019.
All right, thank you very much. All right, anything else, Mr. Administrator?
Yeah, yes, if I may, Mr. President. The, I want to just go back. I have promised council a monthly report. We continue to work on putting together a monthly report that will be meaningful. My objective with this monthly report is simply to have one single point of information being transmitted to city council. This has been rather insightful because I've, I have found myself looking at quite a few other cities of what they're doing and how they're doing. Surprisingly, not that many cities have monthly reports. So I bring this up, I want council to know that this is still on the top of my list and we will get the information. I may though start transmitting a couple pieces individually. For example, I know there was a request for a monthly personnel HR report. Engineering has prepared a report that's quite insightful. So you're gonna see some things that have various departments listed there that I may simply list, report format still being developed. But that'll allow me to get the document to you at least in pieces. So I would appreciate some additional time there. The last meeting, Dog Parks came up. Parks and Rec Director Fields has communicated to the individual who's brought that issue up. I don't see her online. But I want to let council know that the Parks and Rec Department, as well as the Parks and Rec Commission, is looking at parks and last week and again, this, just today, Ms. Fields and I had that conversation. Morningside came up at the last meeting, Mr. President, and I believe our city engineer is on and perhaps under the engineering portion, if she could speak to that. Last council meeting also, the kitchen came up. Council did approve that item, but I want to let council know that we did respond to those questions and the funding sources, how that project was being funded from trust and agency and public services. And then, yes, wipes. We continue to monitor the wipe situation as the city attorney has spoken. We are looking at that litigation. It is my understanding that McComb County Commissioner is only looking to have the industry start changing the verbiage that these wipes are not flushable. And I know the Great Lakes Water Authority is monitoring that. Ms. Schultz has been staying on top of that, as well as Larry Searls. Also, as has been mentioned a couple of times this evening, our, it's unfortunate, our COVID numbers are on an uptick. And our concern is, as we move into fall, that we'll continue to see some increases. So the diligence in masking up, washing hands, people could continue to do that. Our numbers just aren't, you know, we'd like, we, we need to see them decreasing, not increasing, and it is a little alarming. Finally, I do want to thank everyone for, for their kind words and their condolences. I had the most heart touching conversation with our council president yesterday, and he gave me a lot of words of wisdom from his grandmother to his, from, from his mother about his grandmother, and I appreciate that, Mr. President. And I, the, it really makes me recognize how fortunate I am that we truly are a Southfield family, and thank you all. That's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Zorn. Madam Attorney?
Yes, thank you. I want to echo what our, what our city administrator just said, that I'm very glad that I'm part of the Southfield family, and I really appreciate everybody's expression of sympathy. Also, flowers, cards, everyone has sent some comfort to me, and I really appreciate it, and so does my family. But I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Attorney, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, we do have someone on our attendee list that's had their hand rolls for the last couple of minutes. I don't know. I'm not sure who they are, if they're a department head or something, but I just wanted to know if you wanted to either unmute them to see if they wanted to speak before I made my comments.
Okay, yeah, you can go ahead. That'd be fine.
Okay. The caller with their hand up, I did just unmute you.
Yeah, we tried to get through and we couldn't get through, and we've been waiting to speak for communication. This is Pam Gerald and Gerard Mullin. And by the time we were able to get through, we heard counsel.
Well, you can, you can go right ahead.
Well, thank you so much, and my husband would like the opportunity also to say something for three minutes. We have a building in the city of Southfield that we own. It was formerly one of my customers' physical therapy business, and then over the years it changed, and I think the last name on the building is Me Shack. It's right on the corner of Mount Vernon and Greenfield. The city owns that property. Since it appears like we're never going to do anything with Northland, and we're not going to get the cotton candy and the popcorn machine and the Ferris wheel on the property, why don't we consider this piece of property that the city owns for our downtown police station? It's got great parking. It's not too far from the state police, right there on 10 Mile east of Greenfield. And it's a great place for our police department to be, to continue that law enforcement collaboration that we have in what I call that triangular approach. You have south of 8 Mile, which is Detroit. You have east of Greenfield, which is Oak Park, and then you have Southfield. And I really hope that the city would consider making that the state-of-the-art downtown police station. It's about the same size as the downtown station that we had in the Northland property. We own it. And it wouldn't be that much to invest into it, to make it state-of-the-art and secure it. And we can also put a beautiful wrought iron fence around it and make it where the police have to drive into it. I just want you to consider it, and you may not consider it, but I think we probably need to try to get rid of Northland and get out of the real estate business and just try to develop properties that we own with a more realistic approach. And I really appreciate the opportunity, and I'm gonna turn it over to my handsome husband. One moment.
Good evening, Gerard Mullin, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Mr. President, tonight, I would like to talk about Section 11.18. 11.18 in the Southfield City Charter. Section 11.18 is entitled amendments. 11.18 describes how to amend the Southfield City Charter in one easy step. Unfortunately, 11.18 conflicts with the not-so-easy two-step state law, AKA the Michigan Home Rule Act. Thus making Section 11.18 in the Southfield City Charter null and void. 11.18 became null and void when the Southfield authors of 11.18 tried to adapt the Michigan Home Rule Act into the Southfield City Charter. That's when the second step in a two-step process got deleted. State law mandates that there be two, two required steps, not one, but two, two steps to amend the Southfield City Charter. Step number one, the Southfield City Council, that's you folks, must pass first a proposed charter amendment. And then step number two, the Southfield voters, that's us folks, must pass by ballot election the aforementioned proposed charter amendment. Sad to say, 11.18 deletes us folks altogether. That is, 11.18 deletes step number two, the ballot election, and thus disenfranchises the Southfield voter. In a word, you folks here on this city council need to fix Section 11.18 along with the many other flawed sections in the Southfield City Charter by creating a charter commission. Thank you.
We would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak and also to extend our deepest sympathy to our city attorney for the loss of her father. And thank you so much.
All right, thank you, and we apologize that we had some technical difficulties this evening, so hopefully that won't happen again. Madam Clerk, you can go right ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to say that it was good to see everyone this past Friday at the dedication of the municipal complex in honor of Donald Fercassi. I know I've seen some of you all from afar, but it was good to see everybody's face. Many of us, we haven't seen each other in quite some time, so it was good to see everyone and to see the onset of just good vibes with the dedication and the history that we learned during the dedication of the municipal complex. Now I'll switch gears a little bit. There's been a lot of questions about ballot boxes within the city of Southfield. Obviously, everyone knows that it's been some delays expressed through the United States Post Office, so good news, we did get confirmation today that our ballot boxes will be shipped out shortly. So we are looking to have those. There will be two ballot boxes that will be on the municipal complex in which individuals will not have to get out of their car to drop their ballots into those ballot drop boxes. And we are also looking into getting some additional locations throughout the city that are properly secured and in a protected place so that we can make sure that we are making sure that all the ballots are, are safe. So we will be offering more information as we move forward. So, we will be offering more information as we move forward with that. The clerk's office will be mailing out ballots starting next week, as indicated in the previous meetings. As of right now, we, our first batch of ballots that will be mailed out will be close to 30,000 ballots. We are asking residents, if you want to receive, if you want to pick up that ballot instead of being mailed out, feel free to contact my office, 248-796-5150. Again, that number is 248-796-5150. If you do not want your ballot mailed out and you just want to come and pick it up, you do have that option. Otherwise, we are slated to mail close to 30,000 absentee ballots out. That will be reflective of half of our registered voters within the city. We highly encourage those who are looking into voting absentee to please complete your application. That application is available on the city clerk's page at www.cityofsouthfield.com website. This is a very, very important election. And I also want to add one more thing. This election will be the introduction of bringing straight party ticket voting back. Remember, in 2018, we did not have straight party ticket voting for the first time in a number of years. But this election will bring that back. And what does that mean? That means that you can pick a party at the top of your ballot. And through the partisan section, anyone that is a representation or candidate of that party will be selected until you get to the nonpartisan section. So, be on the lookout for an election newsletter that should be in your mailboxes by the end of the month. And that concludes my comments this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Treasurer, do you have anything this evening?
Yes, I do. I wanted to echo, thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to echo condolences for our city administrator, Mr. Zorn, as well as also our city attorney, Ms. King. My heart goes out to you both, as well as part of our Southfield family. And also, I want to echo what was said also in terms of our Jewish community, wishing them all a happy and healthy new year. And also, part of it, I hope anyone forgives me for anyone, anything I may have said or done throughout the course of the year as part of our process of atonement. That's something to ask everyone for forgiveness of. Also, back to business for the city, tax deferment deadline is tomorrow, tomorrow, Tuesday, September 15th. Anyone that is a veteran or senior with household income of below $40,000 can apply for a deferment. And it allows them to extend out the time to pay their taxes without any interest or penalties. They can make partial payments, but those applications need to be in by tomorrow. As well as also, just want to echo, it was a beautiful event on Friday for the dedication of the municipal complex for Donald Ficassi. Well-deserved honor. And it was definitely, he's given his life and dedication to the city. So, it was nice to see and be able to, in his lifetime, be able to see the rewards of his, of his labor and being appreciated. Also echoing what the mayor said about the census, that's very, very important for the finances of the city because for the next 10 years, the funding for the city is based upon the population that we have, and it affects us all. So, if you know of anyone that has not filled out the census yet, if you could please assist them, some people are not as technology savvy, whatever it might be, or people pushed it off. So, please help a relative, a friend, a neighbor, whatever it might be, give them a call, make sure that they all fill out their census as soon as possible. Also, on a personal note, I wanted to congratulate my son, Stephen Lowenberg, on winning the Oakland County COVID Art Contest, competition. He was a self-taught artist, and he was selected among, 5,000 votes were actually placed in the competition and among all the finalists. And thank you, everyone, for voting, whoever did. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And congratulations to him as well from all of us, as I'm sure you're proud father even more. So, thanks. Mr. Planner, anything?
Here, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anything from the assessor? And Lee, you have something from engineering?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide a brief update on a petition that the city received. Some residents along Morningside and Section 16 that were concerned about a rear yard drainage problem they've been having. So, we're not prepared quite yet to come back with an item for council, but been doing a little homework. And the Department of Public Works has generated their work order history for this area. And I've learned there's, there's some existing private rear yard drainage system over here. It's either ill-maintained or in a state of failure right now. So, it is not surprising that they're experiencing some, some issues back there. The appropriate way, if we were to move forward with building some new public infrastructure that the city can then own and maintain, would be through our special assessment district process. The petition, the way it was written, I don't, I need to get still with the city assessor to see if he feels that the petition could be used for the SAD process. Otherwise, we'll reach back out to the petitioners and help them develop some language so that it can apply to our SAD process. There've been some conversations with the Water Resources Commissioner's Office about establishing a Chapter 20 drain. If the petitioners would like to move forward with an SAD, the city would need to prepare a drainage study. And then, we would petition to the Drain Office about creating a Chapter 20 drain for this new system. So, a new rear yard storm system. We don't have a direct revenue stream to maintain rear yard storm systems. So, Chapter 20 drain is, is a way to, to help maintain that in the future through drains at large and, and then pay for initial construction by special assessment. So, more to come on that. Just wanted to give an update on some progress we've made.
Okay. So, this will then come back to us at a later date.
Yes.
Okay. Very good. I'll just check, did counsel, did you guys have any questions for Lee right now? Or is it good to wait until she gives a full presentation?
None by me. No questions.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. Thanks, Lee.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Zorn?
Yes. Parks and Rec Director Terry Fields is on the line, and she'd like to comment regarding dog parks. But before that, if I can just interject, the septic sewer letters are going out, and I want counsel to know that we've included language in there that if you're experiencing any type of hardship to COVID, to please contact the code enforcement office. In addition, we had waived late fees for all water bills when the COVID crisis hit. We're scheduled to start back with penalties on September 23rd. All records indicate that our water collections have been coming in at the same rate. If someone is experiencing a hardship, they should communicate with us. In addition, on the wipes, we are preparing to have a flyer stuffed in the water bills as they go out, reminding people to not dispose of the wipes by flushing them. And, Mr. President, if Terry Fields could just have a few minutes?
Sure. Right ahead, Ms. Fields.
Mr. President, I'm not sure which person Terry Field is, so I don't have to go through everyone and unmute them. Give me one second. Terry, are you there?
Are you okay? Hello?
Are you there, Terry?
I am.
Yep. Got you.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Council President. Good evening, counsel. Just to follow up on Fred's comments earlier, our Parks and Recreation staff is presenting information to our advisory board Wednesday night. We gathered information over the last, I'd say, two, three weeks in regards to surrounding dog parks, the amenities that they have, any costs that are associated with that, residency, non-residency as far as participation, information in regards to shots and whether or not vaccinations have to happen, and in regards to using our dog park or a dog park in the future, if we should move into that direction. But also, to talk about the finances going forward and the investment. So, we will keep the council apprised of information, and any questions that I can answer as we, as we move forward and sharing the information, I'll be happy to do that. Thank you.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you, Terry. All right. We have no meetings scheduled and no ordinances to approve. Does anyone else have anything for the good of order before we adjourn? All right. Hearing none. Meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a great evening.